Good morning, I call to order the January twenty four, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting at nine AM. We are meeting in the San Mateo County Board Chambers as well as remotely via Zoom. Please rise and join me in the presence of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please proceed with roll call.
Commissioner Kunkun.
Here.
Commissioner Hansen.
Here.
Commissioner Serano Kwan. Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Chair Ketchum.
Here.
Thank you, Chair, you have a call.
We will now open public comment for items on the consent agenda and items not on the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will first call upon members in chambers, followed by speakers on Zoom. For in-person comments, the speaker slips are located in the ante room. On Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or star nine if you are calling by phone. And at this time, Madam Chair, we have no public comment for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now close public comment for items not on the regular agenda. Do we have a motion to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
That was a motion by Commissioner Gupta and a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair, motion carries.
We will now move on to item two. Madam Clerk, please introduce the project and the planner.
Owner Dean and Patricia Lawritson. Applicant Marco Constant. File number PLN twenty twenty two dash zero two one seven. Location eight three six Park Avenue, Moss Beach. And your project planner is Glengia.
Hi, good morning, members of the Plan Commission, members of the public and planning staff. This is Glengia, planner with the Department of Planning and Building. The item before the Planning Commission today is item two. The AP can request a design review permit and coastal development permit for a construction of a one thousand and eighty-one square foot garage at eight thirty-six Park Avenue, Moss Beach. The project also involves the construction of a second for second accessory dwelling unit, which does not require approval from the Campaign Commission pursuant to county zoning regulations and the state laws. And also, this project is appealable to the California Coastal Commission. Okay, yeah, as the commission can see on the screen, the subject parcel is currently developed with a single-family residence and that is approximately seven hundred feet from the shoreline. The property is currently surrounded by other single-family residential developments and vacant parcels. The project renderings are showing on the screen. So as you can see on the screen, the project the project has used facade articulation, color selection, like color variation and lighting design to comply with the design review guidelines. And as discussing the staff report, the project was reviewed and recommended for approval by the coast side design review committee. And yeah. And now regarding project compliance with applicable policies, staff found that the project is in compliance with the general plan, design review guidelines, local coastal policies, zoning regulations, public access policies, and Happy Bay Airport land use compatibility plan. Regarding environmental review, staff found that the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA guideline section one five three zero three, class three E, which pertains to the construction of accessory structures. The project involves the construction of a three-car garage and accessory dwelling unit, which are ancillary to the existing single-family residential use of the property. So for this reason, the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And now staff recommends that the Planning Commission approved a coastal development permit and design review permit for a project by making findings and adopting the conditions of approval in attachment A. Yeah, this concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions that a commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions to staff from the commission? Anybody?
No.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to speak? They have fifteen minutes. No? Thank you. So we will now open public comment for item two. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have nobody wishing to speak in chambers at this time. And we have no virtual hands raised on Zoom for item two.
Okay, thanks. We will now close public comment for item two and begin commission discussion on this item. Are there any comments from commissioners? No. If not, we can proceed with the motion.
I'll put the motion out that the Planning Commission approve this application PLN twenty twenty-two, two hundred and seventeen, that approve the coastal, excuse me, coastal development permit for the project and design review permit for a new garage by making the findings and adopting the conditions of approval in attachment A.
I second.
Thank you, that was a motion by Commissioner Hansen and a second by Commissioner Gupta. Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair, motion carries.
We will now move on to item three. Madam Clerk, please introduce the project and the planner.
Owner Kehoe Properties LLC. Applicant Sean Loeb. File number PLN twenty nineteen dash zero zero two nine nine. Location eight three two two Carrillo Highway, Montero. And your project planner is Pamela Kelly.
Good morning, commissioners. This is item number three, PLN twenty nineteen zero zero two nine nine, for a new home at eight three two two Carrillo Highway in Montero. So the, this is a consideration of a coastal development permit, a design review permit and grading permit to allow construction for five thousand five hundred and thirty-five square foot two-story, single-family residence on a legal twenty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-one square foot rooftop lot, again, located at eight three two two Carrillo Highway in Montero. So here we go, there's a overview of the map and area and location. Here is an aerial of the existing parcel with the home that's on it there. And here is a view from the, from Carrillo Highway. So you can see there's a lot of existing vegetation and cypress trees. And you can't really see it from the highway. And here's a view from the opposite location, facing south. So there's an existing three thousand eleven square foot, a single-family home that will be demolished, kind of outlined there in red. Additionally, the applicant will be removing some of this impervious surface all the way back, almost to the house, towards the bluff. So they're going to reduce some of this concrete. All the other structures on site will be demolished as well. Here's the plan for the new, the new single-family home. You can see it's kind of an L-shaped and then again, the impervious surface up there towards the bluff will be removed. It's mostly just kind of dirt and existing vegetation. And then there's going to be a little pathway there. In order to facilitate development, the applicant is requesting the removal of five trees pictured here on the on the plan set. There is an additional tree all the way to kind of the left of the screen, a large cypress tree that has been removed with a previous permit. So that's already been removed. And there was a mistake on condition number seventeen. The county arborist actually recommended that only two Monterey cypress trees be planted on-site. So, and condition number seventeen, it says there would be two for each of the five trees removed, but there will only be two cypress trees planted on-site for that, that large cypress that was removed. And that's at the recognition of the arborist, the county arborist. So for hazards, the applicant has submitted a geotechnical report and a bluff retreat analysis that was included in the staff report. It shows that there was negligible movement in the bluff for the past few decades. And the report has determined that the the home, the new home, will exceed the fifty-year lifespan as required in the, in the LCP. And here's the, the map for earthquake and local faction. The site is outside of these two locations. So the project in conclusion meets all of the zoning regulations for the R1 S seventeen, designer view and coastal development district standards. The project was taken to the designer review committee and the designer committee recommended approval of the project. The project is consistent with the general plan and LCP policies as detailed in the staff report. And it complies with all of the development standards, so no variances are, have been requested. So for the environmental review portion, the staff has determined the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA guideline section fifteen three oh three, which exempts the construction of new single-family residences and residential zones in urbanized area, which this section of Moss Beach is considered urban location. And it will be served with all public services. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the coastal development permit, design review permit and grading permit for PLN twenty nineteen zero zero two nine nine by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A. And also determining that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to that section fifteen three oh three in the Environmental Quality Act guidelines. That concludes my presentation. Open up to any questions and I believe the applicant also had a presentation he wanted to.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions for staff?
I do. So I'm a little bit, a little bit confused with the number of trees that will have to be planted. Is it two or is it twelve?
So it's two. That was the recommendation of the county arborist. They have trees and vegetation there already. There was one large Monterey cypress that was removed from a previous permit and the county arborist determined that the, just two Monterey cypress would be sufficient for this site. But the, the planning commission can
determine. If I could elaborate a little bit on that. You know, on a coastal bluff top location, the presence of large trees is not very common. These Monterey cypress are not necessarily indigenous to the area. I think that from the staff's perspective, having appropriate native coastal landscaping at this location is probably the best thing for the surrounding natural habitat. And so we believe that the, you know, replacement with two cypress trees will kind of preserve the visual aesthetic because they do add to the visual enjoyment, I believe. But we think the remainder of the landscaping plan is appropriate for the site.
Okay, thank you.
So is there a location already planned where they'll be planted or that will be part of the
No, you have a landscape plan?
It's already on there, yes. The applicant can show you exactly where they want those out to you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for planner? Thank you. Do, does the applicant wish to speak? They have fifteen minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through the chair, I would like for the record to note that Commissioner Serano Kwan did join, did join the meeting. Thank you.
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Sean Loeb, I'm the project architect. We've worked extensively with the planning staff over the last year and a half to kind of go through their commentary and react to create a plan that meets their requirements. Couple of additional things that we wanted to point out is that through removal of the impervious surfaces on the site, we're creating a kind of a natural landscape along the coastal bluff there. And we're actually increasing the quality of the drainage improvements on the site by taking all the water that's draining down towards the bluff for future erosion and pumping it back out to the, the front side along Carrillo Highway. Additionally, again, this single-story structure is kind of tucked in behind the Cypress Grove in the front yard with the low, with the low slung profile, a single-story flat roof, which we believe will protect the coastal views as well. And in, in response to the tree replacement, we go to our planting plan here. Again, we have the extensive Cypress Grove at the front of the property. Many of the trees that we are requesting for removal are low-leaning for health and structure. So we believe that by removing those, it'll enhance the health of the existing trees, as well as remove hazards from the site. But we're looking at replacing one tree at the north front corner of the property at the end of the driveway to kind of reclaim an area where we remove the tree, as well as putting one at the front entry of the property on the southern border there, which will provide some more screening towards the existing neighbor's property. We've also been in contact with the existing neighbor to allocate where these trees should be located to kind of preserve neighbor relations. We have our whole project team here to answer any questions, including our project geotech, if there's any questions about coastal erosion. So here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions? Anything? The pumping the drainage out to the highway? That sounds interesting. I, I assume that will then drain down to adjacent sea cliff? And I'm wondering how that's going to affect the drainage infrastructure that is there?
Yes, so the drainage system was taken from the coastal side, pumped up to a detention system, which will be slowly metered out to a bugler at the front of the property. It's actually the front northern corner of the property versus the sea cliff side.
So I'm not familiar with the contours there. Would it would drain down fifth, the paper street of fifth? Or isn't that where you had the water leak that caused the, the?
The water leak occurred at the neighbor's property along the bluff, the bluff side. But again, the, the drainage would be pumped up to a detention system on-site, which would be slowly metered and released out to not create any flooding issues along, along the highway.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, oh, you have, go ahead.
How did the current weather, the storms? How did the area tolerate that? Were there any adverse effects of that?
Let me look to our property owner, there'd be any major concerns on the property with the recent weather?
If I may ask, do you currently, do they currently live there?
I don't currently.
But you visit?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So there would no flooding issues there because of any, because of the current storms? Thank you.
Excuse me, could you identify yourself for the record?
Sorry, my name is Kevin Keel.
Thank you.
Thank you. No more questions.
Anything else?
Actually, for the owner, yeah. If you don't mind. So obviously, there are several hazards associated with this property. So you're, you're aware and totally okay with accepting the conditions that are put on you?
Me and environmental.
And, correct.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, okay, so that's it. Thanks.
The coastal hazards, basically.
Right.
That list of conditions of approval is what I think. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you for your questions. We will now open public comment for item two. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did receive written correspondence from Lenny Roberts from Green Foothills that was circulated to the commissioners and posted to the website. And at this time, we have nobody wishing to speak in chambers. But we do have two virtual hands raised on Zoom, so I will first call on Carlisle and Young, followed by Lenny Roberts.
Thank you. I did look at the slide that you first showed that explained you were going to remove the parent walkway that are cement there. I'm not sure what they said called it, but a hardening along the edge of the bluff. And then you're going to add fill. So my question is, because it's a sloped property, what mitigation will there be to hold back the fill or the onsite stormwater runoff? I think you've kind of addressed the stormwater runoff because you, you must have some kind of system of cash basins down at the bottom near the bluff, so it doesn't flow off the bluff into the marine habitat below. But it didn't show any kind of stuff that would be any wall or retain, retention of the, the fill that you're going to put on the property. So I'm curious, and I guess you're aware, there's no storm drainage on the coast. So hopefully, most property owners install catch basins. And then I just want to say I'm very much in favor of you having reduced trees because they blow down really easily in the storms here, especially closer to the ocean. I live in Moss Beach, in Seal Cove, and I see numerous trees go every year. So if you could answer the question about the stormwater, I mean, sorry, the, what's going to hold back the fill on the edge of the bluff? Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call on Lenny Roberts. Go ahead.
Sorry, good morning. Chair Ketchum and commissioners, I'm Lenny Roberts, speaking for Green Foothills. I sent a letter in and thanks for, thanks for sending the, my letter on to the commissioners. We are, we're, we do appreciate the two, the, the conditions of approval that are, that relate to night sky compliance. And we are hoping that sometime soon the commission, the county will actually adopt additional night sky regulations and also safe bird design. Both of those are extremely important and in, in any project that is going to be facing the ocean. As I noted, we have millions of birds that are killed in the United States every year by striking, bird strikes on buildings that have reflective. The, the birds cannot detect glass the same way our eyes do. So they, there's just a terrible mortality of birds that occurs because of that. And we also would like to commend you, commend the inclusion of the conditions of approval on the assumption of risks and the disclosure of potential hazards as recommended by the coastal commission. So thank you very much for review and approve and consideration of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. And with that, Madam Chair, there are no further public comments for item number three.
Thank you. We will now close public comment for item two. Does the director have any responses to the comments?
It seems to me that the unresolved comment has to do with the assertion that there's going to be fill placed in areas where some of the pavement will be removed. I'm not familiar with the details of that plan, so I'm wondering if Canoa or if the designer could address this.
Yeah, to respond to the, the fill commentary, I think the section that was shown was the geotechnical section that shows the existing fill on the site, not necessarily what we're providing. Our goal is to kind of remove the existing decking, existing concrete and leave the, the grade as it is in place. As part of the commentary from the coastal commission, we actually requested not to have any retaining walls along the coast, coastal line of the property. So everything along that twenty-five-foot boundary from the cliff will be existing and left as is.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any comments from commissioners? This discussion, I guess we're at a discussion now.
The comment on the trees. All the trees in that area, particularly Montero, have been planted in the twentieth century. None existed before the twentieth century for thousands of years. So basically, trees are not native to that area. So any reduction in the trees is actually moving back to its more natural condition. So I have no problems with changing the ratio of what to replace. So I'm supportive of that. And I also want to comment on the design of the house. I think it's a very high design. I think it's a very nice design. And well, my opinion, job well done.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Yeah, it, it looks. I wouldn't have designed it that, but it's still, nevertheless, it's a nice-looking design. It's a very modern design. And but it's it's personal choice, but I would support it. Let's put it that way.
All right. Yeah, I too, in general, I like the design. I think it's a pretty good design. My only concern is normally that, you know, when, when we're taking out trees, we want to have a good ratio of replacement. But I, I understand the, the situation of it's, they're not really native to that area. So I'm good with that. Thank you.
Yeah, regarding the trees, it, it isn't, it's not only the issue of the appropriate species, but that the, the cypress trees have been planted and have planted themselves way beyond any reasonable density in large areas of the midcoast. And so to replace two for one removed is, is really not helping. So I'm fine with that. not helping, so I'm fine with that. I was excited to see the excellent rewrite by the Coastal Commission staff of the conditions of approval for coastal hazards, which also addresses issues raised by the Casamira lawsuit against the Coastal Commission. And also, the very much happy to see the condition of approval by Coastside Design Review Committee that all windows shall be bird sensitive glazing, I know we have talked about this on some projects and basically were the only thing we could really say was gee, I wish you could reduce, you know, something, so to have some policy, I think this is an issue that needs to be expanded upon, I mean, not today, but definitely, it's spoken about more and more all the time as we realize the damage. So if there are no further comments, can we proceed with the motion?
I'll make the motion here. I move that the planning commission approved the coastal development permit, design review permit and grading permit as per county file number PLN twenty nineteen dash zero zero two nine nine by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A.
I'll second that.
Thank you, that was a motion by Commissioner Ramirez and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Zerano Kwan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair, motion carries.
Uh, thank you all for coming, I I just would like to say to staff a request to please post a letter of decision both on today's agenda page and on the Excela online permit site, particularly due to the conditions of approval with broad significance that that are evolving, and it would be good to have those easily accessible.
We'd be happy to.
Thank you. So we will now move on to the director's portion of the meeting.
Yes, thank you, Chair Ketchum, and good morning Commissioners. I apologize for being a little bit tard this morning, the drive was difficult in the rain. So I wanted to report to you on the Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday where they considered an appeal of the new residence proposed at five seventy Live Oak Lane in Emerald Lake Hills. They did uphold the planning commission's decision, but added some supplemental conditions of approval. One of the neighbors was particularly concerned that construction of the new residence could lead to a change in drainage patterns that would affect their property. And so we adjusted the conditions to make it clear that there could be no diversion of stormwater onto the adjacent properties. And you might recall, this property is kind of at the end of a pretty narrow road. And there's at least two other properties that get access from this road end. And so there was a lot of concern about how that road end might be blocked during construction and potentially obstruct emergency access, so we the board established an additional condition to make it clear that that roadway needs to remain unobstructed during construction. So that will pose some, I think, practical challenges for the developer, but we will do our very best to make sure that they comply with that condition. So that's it for yesterday's Board of Supervisors meeting, at next week's Board of Supervisors meeting, which will be January thirtieth. The board will be considering a fourth amendment to the Big Wave Development Agreement. As the commission may know from similar actions in the past, there's a couple different approvals at play with this project. Of course, we have the coastal development permit, which includes the standard condition which allows the director to approve minor modifications to the permit without any sort of hearing. And then we have the development agreement, which was a separate agreement between the property owner and the board of supervisor about how the development will be carried out. That development agreement does not contain similar language that allows minor modifications to be approved at the staff level, so anytime there's an adjustment to the development agreement, we're back in front of the board of supervisors. So once again, we've determined that the requested changes are minor enough in nature to allow them to be processed at the staff level with regard to the coastal development permit. However, we do need to get the board to authorize the changes to the development agreement. And the substance of the change has to do with the amount of development that can take place prior to installation of the intersection control at Cypress and Highway one. For those of you who are familiar with the original approvals, the commercial development of the site was very restricted until uh, either a light or a roundabout was installed at this intersection. However, it did say in the event that that light or roundabout is denied by Caltrans, then a certain amount of dev- commercial development can occur. Okay, so the big wave proponents have been taking the position that because they've been unable to get Caltrans approval to install an intersection control, that that has been effectively denied. The planning and building staff has not agreed with that assertion because our view of the status of their application is it remains incomplete. Caltrans didn't deny it, they just said you need to provide more information, justification and so forth, and they have not had the resources to do that, and in the meantime, as you know, the county has taken on Connect the Coast Side and the Moss Beach Improvement Projects, which includes this intersection. And so we're moving forward with getting that intersection control installed as soon as possible. And Big Wave remains responsible to fund a share of that construction. So the compromise that we have reached because they feel that in order to complete the wellness center aspect of the project, they need some income from the commercial component. We have agreed that to supplement the condition which allows for limited commercial development if the intersection improvement is denied by Caltrans. We've added a statement after if denied by Caltrans or if not approved by January first, twenty twenty four. So in other words, we are not agreeing that Caltrans has denied it, but we are recognizing that it is beyond Big Wave's capacity to complete this improvement independently and in the interest of allowing the of supporting the wellness center and in recognition of the fact that the prior approval allowed a certain amount of commercial development without the intersection improvement. We believe that it's really a minor change and important to enable the wellness center to move forward. There are some other minor adjustments which I can't recall off the top of my head, but the staff report should be published either tomorrow or on Friday. It will be on the Board of Supervisors website, so I encourage you to take a look at it if you have an interest, and I would welcome the opportunity to try and answer any questions you might have about it after you take a look at that report. I have two other items to update the commission on as requested at the last meeting. We've been trying to get AmeriGas to take responsibility for dealing with the fence that was installed without permits and that was required to be removed and replaced by this commission's action. Due to their continued lack of responsiveness, our code enforcement unit is moving forward with violation and citation, and that's been clearly communicated to AmeriGas. And so we'll be ramping up our enforcement actions over the course of the next few weeks with the hope of compelling them to remove the fence and the remaining equipment on the site, which is no longer needed. So unfortunately, I I don't have any specific dates for you at this time, but I'll be working with our code compliance staff and I will be prepared to give you a better sense of kind of the timeline and the progressive enforcement actions that will be taken in the event they continue to ignore these requirements.
Have you already reached out to them with this?
Oh, yes, on many occasions, in fact.
I mean, just recently, since I, since we talked about this.
Absolutely, yes, Code Compliance Manager Tim Sullivan has been reaching out by both email and telephone and has left, shall I say, very stern messages regarding our intent to proceed with enforcement action and with regard to their responsibility to deal with the situation as soon as possible.
So I don't know if this is in response to that or just coincidence, but in the past week, they have flared the big tank, and now it's got painted on the side, something about it's empty, like it really looks like they're about to pull it out. And I'm thinking that, I mean, this is just from the neighbor sending me pictures as all, but it would seem that they probably want to get the tank and those things out before they take the fence down, or I mean, I don't know what they had planned for the fence, but it does seem like a logical first step if they're not going to use it anymore.
Agreed, and I I think that's a hopeful sign.
Yes, a very, very hopeful, and yes, and what about the abandoned vehicles?
Yes, so we've been in contact with the Sheriff's Office. There's a deputy sheriff at the Moss Beach facility that we've been in contact with. The problem that they're having with the abandoned vehicles is the tow company that they're under contract with refuses to tow recreational vehicles. And it's a the background on that is tow companies make money either from people saying, I want my vehicle back and I pay you, or they don't pick it up and then they resell the vehicle. These abandoned RVs are unlikely to be reclaimed, and they will not be able to be resold. And so, given this information, I'm working with our code compliance division on two taxes, number one, to work with the Sheriff's Office and say, come on, can't we figure out a way to get these towed and out of here? And then number two, to if we need to act independently of the Sheriff's Office to take advantage of our abatement funds to hire a firm that will remove it, these units and demolish them. So that's the status of our efforts there.
So just to clarify, this isn't RVs that need towing, this is for example, a flatbed truck towing a flatbed trailer packed to the sky with junk. It's been there for half a year or more. And another ancient vehicle that looks like a moving truck or something that it said it has no license on it that says this can, whatever, I won't go into the details, but it's like, this seems to be the issue if the towing company wouldn't want to tow those, it'd be a big project, and but something has to be done.
Agreed, agreed, without a doubt. You know, I I feel like the planning and building staff has not exhausted our efforts with the Sheriff's Office, but we've kind of hit a little bit of the dead end, so I don't know if, you know, having someone from the community reach out to them to discuss.
If I had a contact.
Yes, I'd be happy to share that with you, I'd be happy to share that with you, and I completely agree that something needs to be done, and if the Sheriff Office is unable to do it, I'm committed to working with our code compliance division to figure out an alternative way to deal with it.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Can I add to that, please? I I think that this, the RV and and, you know, abandoned vehicles, it's a major issue in the incorporated areas of of the county. It has been compounded because most of the cities surrounding us have done away with allowing commercial vehicles parking in their streets. And so, since we don't have an ordinance in our areas, that's where all those vehicles are ending up now. And I think what I've noticed and what I've heard is that there's a lot of people who they don't want those things anymore, but either they're renting them out to people or they're just moving them around because they don't have a place to store them. But then again, we're not doing anything with towing them away and getting rid of them. So I I don't know if this is something that the board supervisors needs to work together with the sheriff to come up with a plan and to how address some of this stuff. Because it's a real issue, it's a huge issue in North Fair Oaks and it's a big issue in the coast that needs to be addressed.
Yes. I agree with what you said, and I think the other department that's critical to be involved in the solution here is Department of Public Works, who sets the parking standards and who also may have the heavy equipment acquired to deal with these, so I will certainly continue these conversations with my counterparts in the other departments and keep you posted on whatever progress we're able to make.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes my report, I'm happy to answer.
Touch on next meeting.
Oh, I I apologize, I skipped over that. My bad. So that was item six, I will go back to item four, the correspondence we received was limited to the letter from Lenny, which you have. Item five, regarding our next meeting, we actually have two informational items that we'll be bringing forward. The first is a final briefing on the North Fair Oaks bicycle and pedestrian railroad crossing study. That's been completed and we've gotten feedback on the draft from the community, which we look forward to sharing with you. And then the other item will be a briefing on the long range work program, so another item that I look forward to getting your feedback on.
Is there a date yet on the housing element update coming back?
I know that Barat and his team have been working very hard to prepare the final submittal to HCD. In fact, we've been working with a consultant to refine our sites analysis. That's just about been completed and we are preparing kind of the final draft to review with this State Department of Housing and Community Development because they need to, we don't want to submit something that they're going to reject again, so we want to make sure that they are satisfied with the way in which they've responded to our prior submittal. And as soon as we can make that happen, we'll get it before the board. Realistically speaking, I think that the earliest that could happen would be late February.
Do Commissioners have any updates or questions? Seeing none?
Oh, Commissioner.
Follow on on the kind of connected with the housing element. I look at all these CDPs for for new homes or upgrades or whatever you may call it, and every permit gives five years, right, they have up to five years to to build, the permit is good for five years. Have we ever considered changing that to shorter period? Because we have this housing element that says that it needs to be done in a certain period of time. Has that ever been discussed, considered?
There hasn't. There hasn't been a strong desire to change that as it relates to the housing element. The county is in a good position when it comes to kind of moderate to above income, single family residential development. We have more than ample sites to meet the allocation we've received for the development of homes that serve that level income. The place we are really having the greatest difficulty is with low and very low income sites. And so, you know, individual, single family homes or improvements, improvements wouldn't even count towards our housing element allocation. So these, yeah, smaller projects really don't give us a lot of bang for the buck, if you will.
Okay, okay. So even even if it's a new home, like an ADU is added, does that count towards?
You know, it does help in that when we submit our housing element to the state, we have to make certain assumptions and predictions about the level of development that will occur in the future. And so with regard to the ADU example, we have submitted to the state that single family residential lots not only can provide one unit, but can provide two or potentially even more under SB nine. They've pushed back a little bit on that and they've asked to see the data that supports that assumption. So what we do is we go back and we evaluate what's been happening. How many permits for ADUs have we given? And so we kind of use our past experience over the course of the last five plus years to inform our predictions about what's going to happen moving forward. And so we will be presenting updated information regarding the level of ADU production to the state. And we will count the ADUs that are built in the coastal zone and anywhere else in the county to try and convince them that this is an effective way in which we're meeting our allocation.
Thank you. Thank you, please.
You're welcome.
Do you on that subject, do you have the number of residential building permits in the midcoast issued in 2023?
I know we have it. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I will make a note.
Jump. I'm just curious.
Oh, yeah, you know, as you've probably seen in our staff reports, we look at it as part of the planning permits and in all the reports I've read to date, we haven't come close to hitting our limit. So I'm not aware that that's changed, but I'd be happy to take a closer look at that and report back to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anything else? Then we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.